Good evening, everybody. Our September eighth, two thousand twenty-five meeting is called to order. We're gonna have prayer and pledge. Will we all stand for the prayer and pledge at this time? Let us pray. Dear God, our Father, we give you glory for tonight. God, I pray that you will be among us and that your Holy Spirit will guide us. And God, we make the decisions that are necessary and proper to further the growth of our city. Thank you for looking upon our city. I pray that we will grow stronger together, having that communal bond where we want to uplift Nagadish and push and support one another as best as we possibly can. We thank you now for the events that are coming up. Pray that they are protected and that they go well. We even pray, God, as we are just in a few days, going to have another commemoration of September eleventh. We pray for our armed forces, those who serve and sacrifice for the freedom of all of us who are Americans and who live in this great country. Continue to give them bravery, courage, and resolve, and bless them beyond measure. We thank you for all these blessings in your son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the fact of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman. At large, we are tonight without Councilman Nielsen. But I do, before we move any further in the agenda, please take a moment to silence your cell phones during this meeting. The City Council encourages public participation. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. However, this limit, time limit, may be reduced if there are numerous speakers on a particular item. To ensure efficient proceedings, all persons addressing the City Council shall state their name and shall speak in a silver and courteous manner. Speakers shall address the agenda topic only to which they are speaking on and shall not be repetitive. Members of the audience, please respect the rights of others and do not create noise or other disturbances so as to disrupt or disturb persons who are addressing the City Council, council members who are speaking, or otherwise impede the orderly conduct of the meeting. Again, thank you all for adhering to those instructions. At this time, we have our reading and approval of the minutes from our August twenty-fifth meeting.
May I make a motion that we dispense with the reading of the minutes of August twenty-five, two thousand twenty-five, and that the minutes be adopted as recorded, with no corrections?
Motion made to second it to adopt the minutes as they have been recorded and given that there are no corrections, and we have a second to it. Any comment about this particular motion? All right, seeing that there are no additional comments, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli.
Yes.
Smith Kirkendall.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
PT.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Look, we always like to recognize our employees of the month and the individual who we have this particular month that we're recognizing. Of course, we put it on social media. Like, he threw it on social media before we could. He got a whole lot of comments and attention, so certainly he's a well-known individual in our community. I think he's been with Parks and Rec for, I think he said nineteen years? Is that correct? Kevin, just want to give you the floor, having an opportunity to say some things about Mr. Jerikus Anderson.
Like I said, you made the statement about how long he's been with the city. Started with a, probably on the end of a weed eater, coaching our youth in this area. Give him back to the community and then worked his way up the ladder. Now he supervises all the grounds crew for the Rec Department and does things for us. Very valuable for the city. He's able to do things that we don't have to run equipment in the shop all the time. He has the ability to work on it. I guess, lead by example, he shows the workers things to do and how to do it. He's very valuable to this parish and to the city of Natchez also. If you drive by his house at any given time, he's mentoring young people, young men, they at the house all the time, doing positive stuff. You know, they're sitting around. He just leads in a way that's very positive, and I tell him that all the time. Don't quit doing what you're doing. It doesn't go unrecognized. I mean, I'm very proud of him for that part of what he gives back to the young people. So, just an outstanding employee, good to have around, help you any way you can.
Right, and we certainly appreciate all of his, you know, the word call work that he certainly gives back to the city. So, you could check it out, as we always put up some of those particular questions, any questions, that we get them answered, so you could check that out with Jerikus, as we do for the other employees. All right, we had something down for special recognition, but something has come up with individual recognizing, and so we're just gonna push that to the next meeting, okay? All right, so that means we're going to our lone proclamation today, which is read by Councilwoman at large, Smith Kirkendall.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Resolution Number zero seven four, two thousand and twenty-five. A proclamation declaring that September twenty-five, September two thousand twenty-five, is National Sickle Cell Awareness Month in the city of Nagadish. Whereas September is National Sickle Cell Awareness Month, the observance unanimously passed by a congressional resolution in nineteen eighty-three was endorsed through a presidential proclamation, which spoke to the national progress that had been made to diagnose and treat sickle cell disease. Whereas the proclamation also cited the success of comprehensive sickle cell centers across the United States in establishing programs of research, training, and community service to address sickle cell disease. A blood disorder causing abnormalities in hemoglobin, leading to the telltale sickle shape and suffers red blood cells. Whereas in the past decade, there has been substantial progress in research on sickle cell disease. Diagnostic procedures have been greatly improved. Measures to amniotic rate, excruciating painful sickle cell crisis have been introduced for those afflicted with the disease. Whereas sickle cell disease presents grave health challenges for an estimated one hundred thousand Americans. For some, it triggers intermittent episodes of pain, difficulty with vision, and serious fatigue. Other survivors experience this disease more acutely. Sickle cell disease can cause infections, strokes, and even organ failure. Whereas for almost everyone impacted, coping with inherited red blood cell disorders means putting plans on pause, living with excruciating pain, paying for expensive treatments, and hoping for a day when medications and doctor visits no longer interrupt life. Whereas during National Sickle Cell Awareness Month, we recognize the perseverance of sickle cell disease patients, and we recommend and we recommit to working with our partners in state and local government, the nonprofit space, and the private sector to develop treatments and cures for this debilitating disease. Whereas sickle cell disease affects our population unevenly, black and brown Americans are disproportionately affected. About one in thirteen black children test positive for the sickle cell trait, and about one in three hundred and sixty-five black Americans develop the disease over the course of their lifetime. Due to persistent systemic inequities in our healthcare system, these same patients are also often the last ones to get help. Whereas, as we continue research to find a cure for sickle cell disease, let us celebrate the strides our health experts have made in understanding and treating this condition. Let us continue to offer support to those battling its effects today. Now, therefore, I, Rodney Williams, Junior Mayor, and the Nagadish City Council do hereby proclaim September two thousand twenty-five as National Sickle Cell Awareness Month in the city of Nagadish, and call upon the residents of the nation, Louisiana, to learn more about the progress we're making to reduce the burden of this disease on our fellow residents. And I move for adoption of our Resolution Number zero seven, proclamation Number zero seven four, two thousand twenty-five.
I'll second.
Motion made to second it. Just proclamation to bring awareness to this. As an African-American man, I know individuals who have, you know, lost their lives to this particular disease. I was on social media the other day, and I saw something pop up about a cure, so Johns Hopkins, there's an article there, so I haven't, you know, I mean, it's Johns Hopkins, so they, very top-notch medical institution. So, we'll see. I haven't seen much of that in the news, but they say on that article, so maybe that's some hope that, you know, there could be some changes there with sickle cell anemia. I know we have Ms. Judy Hayes Walters here. I don't know if you'd like to have any remarks, or would you like to at this point?
Um, I don't agree.
Look, just for the record, we'll get you to state your name, when you just state your first and last name and get into your remarks. And again, we're grateful that you're here today to represent this cause.
This is our fifth year coming to you.
State your name, please.
I'm sorry, Judith Hayes Walters. This is our fifth year coming to you to ask for a proclamation to have Sickle Cell Anemia Month, and to our mayor, to our council lady, and the council. I'm coming on behalf of the Crew of Excellence, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, the Crew of Nine, and Northwestern State University young folk, the Omegas, and our M U on Northwestern campus. I would like to say that this is not a contagious disease. It affect the black and brown population. However, at some time, it can be passed the same way to, just like it, just like it's passed, your genes are passed with your eyes, your nose, your skin color, your hair. And while our major race don't rank among those most likely to have sickle cell, they can develop it as well, and it can affect people of any background. I would like to state that on Saturday, September the thirteenth, there will be a blood bus in front of the Martin Luther King Center, especially for this purpose, to donate blood for this cause, as well as other needed causes. We also serving activities at the MLK Center and have formative speakers to share their journey of having sickle cell. So, we would like to encourage everyone to be a mouthpiece for us, to come and listen to some of the experiences these folk have had during their journey. And we want to encourage your workers and family members to go and give blood, those that are able, and let's remember that when we give, others will live. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate you, again, pushing out information, bringing awareness to this illness. When did you say the blood bus is gonna be?
It will be in front of the Martin Luther King Center on MLK Drive.
What time?
It will be from eight to noon. This is Saturday, September the thirteenth.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right. Any additional comments about this particular proclamation? All right, seeing now, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli.
Yes.
Smith Kirkendall.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
PT.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries, and Mrs. Walters, we'd like to get a picture with you, if you don't mind coming back up and do it. We also have Ms.
I have one member, and also the chief of the group.
Okay.
Sure.
So, there's Ms. Moses there? All right, come on, let's do it. Chief, you jumping in? Okay.
And please excuse me, because I have to leave for another meeting after the meeting.
Get everybody.
Oh, shit.
Everybody.
Right, we do have one item that's for introduction on the planning and zoning side, and Councilman Harrington is going to take care of that one for us.
This is ordinance thirty-one of two thousand twenty-five, and ordinance amending ordinance sixty-four of two thousand one, by changing zoning classification of property described as follows. It's four thirty-four Williams Avenue, from R one to R one, special exception for operation of a short-term rental. This is for introduction only.
Okay, all right. We've got an image of the, of the home on the board. Shantrelle, anything else?
No, councilperson Harrington spoke about it. The applicant is just wanting to rezone the property to be in compliance with applying for a short-term rental.
Okay, and we've seen these before, counsel. I don't know if y'all have any comments or questions here on this particular one?
And this is on the river side on Williams, and there's properties, is there one even adjacent to it? I know there's several there that have been.
Several, several on Williams.
There's one even that's directly adjacent to it, that's a.
There's one, the Chickapin on the river, and then we had one that was recently approved at the last council meeting, three oh one Williams Avenue. The pictures show a white building, but they just painted it blue. Then there's two others, one across the street from three oh one Williams, actually two across the street from three oh one Williams, so all of Williams Avenue, just about.
Just about, yeah.
Yeah, especially on the river side.
Okay.
Because y'all know what I'm getting at. Y'all know what I'm talking about, about the character of surrounding properties and meeting that with our ordinance is, because y'all know what I'm getting at.
Yeah.
I like to lay that on the record and build that up, so.
If it's already allowed in the area, then.
Yeah, nowhere.
Okay. All right, again, this is just for introduction, so our next meeting, we will have it to vote on, okay? All right, we've got a few resolutions on tonight, and this first one is read by Councilwoman Washington, Eli.
Thank you, Mayor, and this is a table warm-up and stuff. We normally do this every year, so. Resolution Number zero two, zero seven two of two thousand twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Nagadish, Rodney Williams, Junior, to execute a meeting number one to maintenance agreement, including mowing and litter pickup with the state of Louisiana Department of Transportation Development for additional state funds for maintaining DOT right-of-way and state way. And whereas the city approved Resolution Number zero five eight of two thousand twenty-five on June the twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five, for maintenance agreement, including mowing and litter pickup with the state of Louisiana Department of Transportation Development Office of Engineering, beginning July the first of two thousand twenty-five through June the third of two thousand twenty-six. I think the amount, well, I don't see the amount on the paper and anything like that, so I move to adopt Resolution Number zero two seven, two thousand twenty-five.
Second. Motion made to second it. We've got two dealing with L A D O T D today. I believe this one is giving us one more cut. This is the one giving us one additional cut. O'Donnell, would say that?
No, I think this one giving us five cuttings. They used to give us four, they're giving us extra cut.
Okay.
The cut that we maintain, and we cut more than five times, but for us to keep the city looking good, we cut maybe ten times or twelve times a year. But they are, they agreed to pay five cuttings to make sure, you know, that maintains everything looking good, so we have to cut it more times than what they would cut it.
Yeah, and this is the right-of-way throughout the, the state right-of-way throughout the city?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Righty.
I got a quick question. For us, how far do we cut up, like, on university? Do we go like, just say what, the auto mile? Do we go like toward forty-nine? You cut that too, or just strictly on university?
No, the trikes usually come, but sometime we'll go out there if we start getting a lot of growth, you know, overgrowth on that area, because sometime, you know, D O T D cut it, but they don't maintain it as much as we cut it, so if we see like it's overgrowing, we'll go out there sometime and trim it, you know, to make it look more, you know, for people coming into town, you know, to make.
My question is, it says in here that they're gonna make up some of the funds available to the city of Nagadish, so they're paying us for the four that we're to do, is what that is?
Yeah, they, yes.
Okay. What amount?
I didn't see that, but it's normally about twenty-nine thousand, right at thirty thousand.
This is the same amount from last year.
About twenty-nine thousand?
Yeah.
Pretty good.
Any other comments or questions here? All right, so now, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli.
Yes.
Smith Kirkendall.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
PT.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. The next one is D O T D, but it's dealing with our regional airport and Councilman PT.
Got you, thank you, Mayor. Resolution Number zero seven three, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development for improvements at the Nagadish Regional Airport. Whereas the city of Nagadish has requested funding assistance from the L A D O T D for reimbursement of general aviation maintenance expenses. Whereas the stated project has been approved by the Louisiana Legislature, and the L A D O T D is agreeable to the implementation of this project and desires to cooperate with the city of Nagadish according to the terms and conditions identified in the attached agreement. Whereas the L A D O T D will provide the necessary funding for the general aviation maintenance of two thousand twenty-five and reimburse the sponsor up to nine thousand nine dollars seventy-nine cents of the project cost. May I also move to adopt Resolution Number zero seven three.
Second.
Motion made to second it. Ed, you wanna give, anything else?
It's an annual reimbursement that the state of Louisiana does for maintenance upkeep, and it's for things like fuel for your tractors or your lawn mowers, repairing the fence, repairing the gate, just kind of general maintenance items like that. They have a pot of three hundred thousand dollars per year that they divide up between the airports, but not all airports apply for the money, and it's, it's free money. You can say it's not a lot of money, but it's about nine thousand dollars for us, so that the airports that don't apply for it, you know, they're taken out of consideration, then they divide it up amongst the others that did apply for it. So, we're, we were, we apply for it every year, and our share this year is about nine thousand dollars, and it's the same whether you're New Orleans or Baton Rouge Airport or Nagadish Airport. We're all treated the same for, out of this pot of money.
Yeah, and I'll say, Ed, we had a, I think, a pretty good meeting, a week, week and a half ago, something like that?
That's right.
Just dealing with.
It's on the C I P that we'll be talking, I think, talking about here in a minute, too. And this was part of it.
Oh, it's on there, too? C I P is on here today?
Um.
No.
C I P's not on.
You want it? You just.
No, it's not. I thought that, I thought the C I P was on here.
Yeah.
It's changed, my bad, sorry about that.
But it's something we need to get it on for next time?
Yeah, it.
We could work that.
It might be on for the next meeting or the one in October.
Okay, but just generally to say, good meeting. I think we had a D O T D person up, and also K S A, of course, Justin was there, Ed was there, so. So, hey, look, we're trying to do what we can to improve it, and going to those pots of money to make sure we can do it. Any comments or questions about this? All right, seeing now, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli.
Yes.
Smith Kirkendall.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
PT.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. All righty, next is read by Councilwoman at large, Smith Kirkendall.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Resolution Number zero seven five of two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a change order number two to the contract between the city of Nagadish and Lemoyne Company for the water treatment facility improvement, phase one. Being.
improvement phase one, bid number zero-six-six-seven. Whereas the city of Natchitoches awarded the bid to Lemoyne Company contract on May twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-four by ordinance number zero-one-one of two thousand twenty-four in the amount of nine million two hundred and seventy thousand dollars for water treatment facility improvements phase one. Whereas on December ninth, two thousand twenty-four, the city council approved change order number one in the amount of sixteen thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars, making the revised contract total nine million two hundred thirty-three thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars. Whereas on September third, two thousand twenty-five, contracted issued, issued change order number two, which is fully described in attachment A. Whereas the contract sum will be increased by this change order number two in the amount of fifty-five thousand six hundred and fourteen dollars, and the revised contract total will be nine million two hundred eighty-nine thousand four hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Whereas the contract time will be increased by this change order number two from four hundred and ninety-five days, four hundred and ninety-five calendar days, to five hundred and two calendar days. Whereas the project engineer, Andrew Werner, has recommended this change order. Whereas the city is of the opinion that change order number two is in the best interest of the cities, of the city, whereas the approval of change order number two is contingent on approval by the Office of Community Development Water Sector Program. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Natchitoches, a legal session convened at the Honorable Mayor Ronnie Williams, Jr., is hereby authorized and empowered and directed to execute the reference change order number two to the agreement between the city of Natchitoches and the contractor Lemoyne Company, L O C. I move for adoption of resolution number zero-seven-five.
I'll say.
Motion made, the second. Look, I'll say just a little something I want to pass to Tim. I think Tim has spoken to all of the council about why this is unnecessary. Obviously, you don't want to have change orders. You want it to be what it was bid for, but just like with anything, once you start, you're getting into it, you're digging things in the ground, things that you can't see. You inevitably may run into that. But I will say, to have only two change orders on a nine million dollar project at this point is not that bad. So, you know, we hope the project continues to go smoothly, but Tim, you might want to give some details about what this is.
What it is, is during the excavation for the originally proposed tie-in location for the finished water from the new plant, it was discovered that the sixteen-inch transfer gravity line for, for Clearwell Two was directly on top of where they were going to tie in to the thirty-inch finished water. That being said, they were going to have to build modified vaults, and it was going to be multiple vaults. So, it was going to be, it was going to cost us money either which way we went with this. So, in order to get away from the vaults, which is hazardous in its own right, you've got chlorine and ammonia and everything down in these vaults, you put personnel down in these vaults, and you're putting them in with hazardous chemicals. Plus, you would have to de-water it. The blue li, the blue pipe that you're looking at is the transfer line that's sitting above the thirty-inch. It's a gravity line, so you can't really move that gravity line very much, or you're going to stop your water flow into your Clearwell. So, what we decided to do was move the pipe away from that tie-in and move it over to where every other plant ties in. Whole lot easier, lot shallower, more safe. It's, it's a whole better setup, and it's going to cost twenty-seven thousand five hundred and thirty-eight dollars to do it. It's very, very, it's much better to move it to where we're going to move it to. The second part of the change order, it's a two-part change order. The second part of it is actually something that happened at the very beginning of the bid process, just before it went into bid, Veolia, who designed the blowers for the backwash unit, said that the twenty-five horsepower blowers were not going to be adequate enough to put out enough volume air for a sufficient backwash. So, they moved it to a forty horsepower. That was able to get in to the original bid, but the electrical components were not added into the, to the original bid. So, this second part of the change order is just covering the electrical components that didn't get added into the original bid.
And what we're looking at is what you call, how you said it, a blow?
That is a blower motor. That, that puts out an air scour in the backwash.
Okay. Any questions for Tim? I think we have pretty good explanations there. All right. Any comments or questions about this? Like I said, in the grand scheme, we, okay, we don't like change orders, but in the grand scheme of things, on a nine million dollar project, cross our fingers hopefully it continues to go that way, but it hadn't been too bad with, with those. And just this, we had this picture, of course, it had nothing to do with the change order, but what is this, Tim?
That is the overflow clarifier for the Plant Four. That is where the raw water comes into the new plant, and it travels up through this cone, and it settles out all the particles in the raw water, and then it transfers from there to the filters for its final treatment.
So, this is not going to be Plant Four? This is not?
Yes, this is part of Plant Four.
This is part of Plant Four.
Beginning of Plant Four. The raw water from Sibley Lake comes into this. This is where the most treatment actually happens with sedimentation, coagulation, and flocculation in this, in this clarifier. Once the water clarifies and all the, the particles settle out of this, then it travels to the filters and goes through the sand filter like a swimming pool, and goes into the Clearwells, where it's where it receives its last chlorine, fluoride, and its last treatment.
Okay, good. So, I mean, a lot of the work has been underground so far on the water treatment, so when I saw that coming up, I'm like, oh, they got some stuff they're building on top of the ground now, so it's really cool.
Is this a current picture or is this an old picture?
No, this is like a last week. Yes, sir, it is very current. Mm-hmm. He asked if this was a current picture or an old picture. Yeah, this is, this is new.
They're actually building the inside of this cone outside. They're building it in place outside, and they're going to lower it down into it. It's about halfway built now.
Right, yeah. Yeah, I think we did a post on this about a week ago, so we showed some of the inside pictures as well, a, as it is now. But, good, like I said, project we think going well, but have to deal with these change orders. All right, I don't think we had any more comments or questions. Mr. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Smith Kirkendall? Harrington?
Yes.
P T?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Next item is read by Councilman?
Eli.
Washington. Eli.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to say this is my classmate. Yes. A classmate. Resolution number zero-seven-six of two thousand twenty-five, a resolution pointing a special counsel for the city of Natchitoches, whereas Ox Holder, did I pronounce that name correctly? Ox Holder, I guess.
Oxenhandler.
Oxenhandler, oh, yeah. It's all for the reason, of a special counsel for the city of Natchitoches, worker compensation. Section four-two charter of the city of Natchitoches, state of Louisiana, that the city, Ronnie Williams, Jr., the mayor of the city, of the mayor, has appointed Matthew Lee Nolly to serve as the special counsel here, as a special counsel for the purpose of providing legal services related to the city of Natchitoches workers' compensation case. And where the city, the special counselor has negotiated agree upon terms for the fee and authorized representation of employees, special counsel sometimes hereafter refer to the fee agreement and authorized representative agreement. And I don't see which page that the fee is on, but that's basically, I'll let the mayor explain basically what this is. So, I move to adopt resolution number zero-six-seven of two thousand twenty-five.
I second to adopt resolution number zero-seven-six of two thousand twenty-five.
Oh, correction, thank you, Councilwoman L. George.
Okay, yeah, zero-seven-six. Hey, look, motions made and, we've got a motion, the second. Just want to give it to Alex, kind of explain why we're here at this point, why we're doing this.
Yeah, recently, as you know, we appointed the Goldweens firm to handle workers' comp matters. Steve Oxenhandler since announced his retirement from the firm, so, so no one's at the firm that's handling workers' comp cases. So, I contacted Matt Nowlin, which is president. I learned that he has roots here in Natchitoches, and we all know the name, but he handles workers' comp cases, which worked out perfectly, although he lives in Alexandria, but he's from here. So, I called him, and he was agreeable. He provided us with a draft contract to provide to the council, which is attached to the legislation. And I'm asking for this counsel to appoint his firm as special counsel for workers' compensation cases. And he's present also.
Yeah, thanks, Alex. And again, he said that who we normally use, Steve Oxenhandler, is retiring. And I know, I know, of course, H R talked to him a lot, but both of our chiefs, Chief Wynn, Chief Collins, and, as well, I'm sure Ed had a lot of interactions with, and will have, continue to have interactions as well. But we have Matt here. Matt, if, probably the only time addressing us, because once we get those attorneys in, they don't, you know, but, but hey, if we could have you to just, hey, come and say a little something, people of Natchitoches. I mean, this is where you're from, please state your first and last name and just whatever.
Yes, Matthew Nowlin, from Alexandria, or originally from, born and raised in Natchitoches, but my practice is in Alexandria. Been doing workers' compensation for eleven years, been representing municipalities, public bodies, state of Louisiana my entire career. And been doing, like I said, workers' compensation for over eleven years now, including mostly all throughout central Louisiana, about thirteen parish area. Where Natchitoches sits is in District Two for workers' compensation, so it's about a ten-minute drive from my office. So, anytime we have to go there, there's really minimal travel. I've already had some preliminary meetings with Mr. Lee and others and with the city, without charge to the city. Y'all will be appreciating that. But just to kind of get up, so we can hit the ground running, there's a couple of matters that are already pending. And I met with Mr. Oxenhandler for about an hour and a half, I believe, either last Friday or the Friday before last, to just kind of make the transition to hand off a little bit easier. Happy to answer any questions from the mayor or council people, members, if y'all have anything y'all would like to ask me, I'm here.
Happy to have somebody from Natchitoches.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome.
Thank you. I look forward to working with y'all.
If we could swear, swear him in under oath, I got a lot of questions. I want to get him, get him to answer under oath.
Can we, can we, can we vote on the resolution first and then before y'all can?
I know, Councilman Harrington and Matt know each other.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Since about first grade, I guess.
We could ruin each other's lives, probably. Under oath, that's why I want to get him under oath.
I think the term is mutually assured destruction, so.
Well, we're going, going, pretend we're in Vegas, okay?
What happens in Vegas?
Thanks, thanks.
Well, look, Matt, and look, we're excited to, to have you aboard. Of course, everybody knows your dad around here. Her Councilwoman Washington, Eli, said y'all graduated together. What that means is, is that you did not graduate in the best class to ever come from Natchitoches Central, which happens to be the class of two thousand and four. And I know I got a second over there from Clarissa. All right, but look, man, it's, it's good to have you aboard.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Any, any comments, questions? All right, CNN, Mr. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Smith Kirkendall?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Welcome aboard, Matt. We're happy to have you, man.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman.
Yeah, all right, awesome, awesome. Okay, just two more things, and this next one's read by Councilman Harrington.
This is resolution seventy-seven of two thousand twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Natchitoches to cover all construction costs, including change orders over the state funding of one point eight million for the capital outlay grant from the state of Louisiana for the city of Natchitoches Fire Station, University Parkway, L A Highway Six, planning and construction. I move to adopt resolution seventy-seven of two thousand twenty-five.
I second.
Motion made, the second. This is, you know, not that earth, Google Earth view, but gives you a view of where the station will be. I think many of us know where that, where that is. Long-held desire of the city, I think it goes back to Mayor Joe Samptate, at least, I don't know. Chief Wynn can say something about that. Chief, do you like to say why we have to do this?
This is going to be where the new station's located at. It's a, it's a good project. It's gonna, it's gonna help our response times in that district. It's gonna put a new station over there, new station that's gonna cover, that's gonna be good for the citizens and good for the employees, and looking forward to it. It's been a long time coming.
Right, and we were able to get one point eight million from the state in capital outlay funding, and so what this is saying is, I think we've got a, you call it an opinion of probable cost, maybe, something like that we got?
Two point.
It came up to what?
Two point seven.
Came up to about two point seven, which obviously nine hundred thousand over, but our plan and our desire is to stick within that one point eight, certainly as best we can. We've seen where, when the actual construction bid was given, that came back lower than what the architects thought. Don't know that it's going to happen here, but I'm hopeful, and we know how bids go. But this is saying the state said, hey, we've got one point eight for you. They're showing two point seven, you would have to cover the rest if there are any difference, and so. But really, when we get those construction bids, is really when we would have some decisions to make.
I think we're waiting on the state fire marshal now.
We're doing what?
Waiting on the state fire marshal to finish their approval and ready to go the next step.
Yep, and certainly, council, we'll keep you all abreast, but this is something we have to do that the state requires us to do in that particular process, so. But excited, think it's going to be a great project for us. Any comments or questions here? Right, CNN, Mr. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Smith Kirkendall?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
P T?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Okay, oh, it's another image of the, all right, I didn't realize we had that, but that, what is that show, chief?
That's the, that's the front view of the station, and that's kind of an aerial view. That bottom picture is kind of an aerial view. As design goes, things change a little bit. It's scheduled to be about an eighty-four hundred square foot building. The parking area that you see off in the back is going to be, actually be moved up towards the side of the building, and the front entrance is a, of course, University Parkway. So, we've got several, we've already got it approved through D O T D for the front driveway. We've already had the soil testing done. We've had the topographical map done. So, I mean, we're well into this project, and we, it's going good.
We're getting close.
Yes, sir.
Getting close. That's what he said, state fire, fire marshal. We're getting close. Also, we had a Natchitoches architect.
Yes, that, that's right.
Brandon.
Brandon Cooper, he, the architect, he is actually from Natchitoches.
Yeah, yeah. So, lives in Baton Rouge now, but he, he designed this fire station. All right, next, council can ask that you all with motion to move, excuse me, motion to amend the agenda to add resolution number zero-seven-eight of two thousand twenty-five.
Mayor, make a motion that we amend the agenda to add resolution zero-seven-eight of two thousand twenty-five to the agenda.
Motion made and seconded to amend the agenda. Mr. Stacy and I were talking earlier. This is something the project manager on this reached out to us about, and this is, you see L C D B G Public Facilities Grant. This is the one we have going now, right?
This is for the streets.
This is for the streets. So, they're doing the streets in Welch or Brede Town, J C W. They're gonna do the Brahma Drive development over there. They're gonna do Howland Park and also off of, what is it, Woodard, going back into Kenny Square. So, this is what this is related to, and we just had to have it done, and we didn't, it wasn't communicated to us until today, I think. So, and that's how we, that's how we're here at this point. All right, got a motion, the second on it. Any, any comments about that? All right, CNN, Mr. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Smith Kirkendall?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
P T?
Yes. All right, that motion carries. Thank you, council. Now, Councilman P T.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number zero-seven-eight of two thousand twenty-five, a resolution adopting the language access plan for the two thousand twenty- to be in compliance with the HUD regulations. Whereas as part of its citizen participation plan to reach out and inform its citizens, the city has developed a language access plan to inform its citizens who may not understand or speak English. Also move to adopt Resolution Number 078.
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded to adopt this resolution. Language Access Plan, Councilman read through it. Mr. Stacy, anything else you know about this one?
No, well, basically, it's a requirement for the LCDBG grant. I'm named the coordinator for it. We've never had to use this historically at all, but if someone does need, is not very proficient in English, they'll just contact us and then we'll contact the consultant and they'll help us to get someone, you know, to communicate with them. That's basically what it is.
So one of those state steps that they require to try to be, I think they're trying to be accommodating to, as many people, all people, as they possibly can, so that's really what it sounds like this is about, so. Any comments or questions here? All right, CNN, Mr. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli.
Yes.
Smith Kirkendall.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
PT.
Yes. All right, that motion carries. Look, our next meeting is in a couple of weeks, on September 22nd, and look, we're encouraging everybody, download to go Natchitoches app for events and regroup for, you know, we put emergency-related things on regroup to get to everybody. Just want to share a few announcements with you, or do we have some, Steve? Yeah, want to share a few with you. Look, this is Natchitoches Central Football, Day One, I think, against Bro Bridge. You know, we got an easy opponent this week, in Evangel's, not, not going to be any problem, all right? But, of course, everybody knows Evangel's really good, but we're going to go up there, we're going to do our best to play. But the home game, so you can get this off Natchitoches Athletics as well, all right? And then also St. Mary's, so let's see, St. Mary's is, what indicates a home game? Yeah, they're home, anytime you say it's Turpin Stadium. So, you know, and look, we'll, we'll put these as well on the Go Natchitoches app so people know just the home games, so they know, know what's going on, because both teams play at Turpin, but they play the Red River Bulldogs here on Friday, so that, that should be pretty interesting and a good game to see. All right, so please support our local teams during this season. And then, of course, Demon Football as well, we got off to a really good start because we went up to Minnesota and what happened was, we ain't going to talk about it, but, but anyway, but we got a next game in Cincinnati, then we play Prairie View, okay, somebody did say that, so we got Prairie View this year, but we played them at their place. So no games in September, no home games in September, and then we come back against East Texas A&amp;M for homecoming, so that October 4th is also homecoming. So looking forward to seeing our Demons again that first Saturday in October. All right, this is, okay, this is happening this Friday and it's associated with Kane River National Heritage Area, and basically what they have is a fundraiser. We know they're trying to do a discovery center. It is going to be dynamic, it's going to be great for this community, but they got a fundraiser at Dark Woods with the miniature golf going on, so, you know, just want to give them some support and get people to sign up to play for this good cause. All right, this is one we've been announcing for some weeks now and it's coming up soon on September 18th. And this is Women's Resource Center Be the Light Gala, and like I said, they've got a speaker, Bill McClapper, who's going to be there, so, again, that's one that's always well-attended in the community. Lunchtime, Lanyap is back, Kane River with Casey. All right, so they've got some everyday moments and last stories going on. These are always free to the public and they, they're pretty, pretty much a stickler for the time, so they get you in and out in 30 minutes and, so again, I think this is always great, great opportunity to learn what's going on in the community, some great work that individuals are doing in Natchitoches, and I think a lot of people are doing some really good things. So anytime you can make it to Lunch and Learn over there. This one, excuse me, is next Friday on the 19th, 12:15 to 12:45. The Natchitoches Meat Pie Festival, we had, we know this weekend, I think it was, I'm really waiting on, Sean, is there any feedback from the Bigfoot Festival?
I think the organizers were a little disappointed, the crowds were not like it was last year, but they still had a lot of people, a lot of traffic, a lot of vendors, but it was a little bit lower than last year.
Okay, okay.
And they don't necessarily know why exactly, but it was a little lower than they anticipated.
Right, got that momentum of, you know, everything, how last year Wells was going to do something, but, but we do have another festival coming up and it is the Natchitoches Meat Pie Festival, so we're looking forward to that next weekend, all right? They have two days going on. And then you, you follow up, two weekends after that, you follow up with the Natchitoches Car Show that has been growing and growing every year, so we're really looking forward to that. And, you know, we've just got several events that are happening in the City of Natchitoches and always want to ask people to support them. There are some great people who take their time to plan these events, they don't have to do it, but they do it on a volunteer basis and it, it's what makes us who we are. I just, somebody just sent me this, it's not, you know, an announcement per se of an event going on, but 11 Best Downtowns in the Southern United States by World Atlas, so I'm assuming we're on the list, they wouldn't have sent it to me if we weren't. But, yeah, we're on the list, okay? Natchitoches is there. So we'll be giving some promotion ad. Steve, those are all of the announcements?
Yeah.
Yep, we always encourage you to download to go Natchitoches app to keep up with those announcements. Thank you, folks, for being here tonight. At this time, council, we would hear a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Mayor, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion is made to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned, have a-